All right, folks, it is 10 o'clock, so we will start with taking attendance of the board members who are here. For the public that we have Ms. Marin, who has submitted a written request to virtually attend this work session due to vacation. Ms. Cohen has submitted a written request to virtually attend this work session due to a medical condition. Mr. Frisch has submitted a written request to virtually attend this work session due to vacation. After attendance, after roll call, we will call for the vote from board members who are in person today. We have Ms. Corbett Sanders. Ms. Denat Kofax.
Here.
Ms. McLachlan will be joining us a little bit later. Ms. Keys-Gamara.
Here.
Ms. Omeish. Ms. Pakarski.
I'm here.
Ms. Tolan. Ms. Seizmo Heizer. I will now call for the vote. All in favor of approving these requests for the three members who will be participating virtually in the July 13th work session, please raise your hand. We have Ms. Omeish, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. Seizmo Heizer, Ms. Pakarski, Ms. Denat Kofax, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Tolan, and myself. All the members in person are in favor. There are none opposed, none have abstained. At this time, we will begin with the first agenda item, which is the SRNR. We have a red line review of all changes that have been submitted for the SRNR, and this is a school board member's opportunity to ask questions and to build understanding before the vote on this matter takes place this Thursday. I will ask staff to very quickly review what the red line items are, very quickly, so we have the rest of the time devoted to discussions and conversations from the board. Ms. Dr. Boyd, please go ahead.
Good morning, and thank you, Dr. Anderson. A presentation that's coming up on the board, we just want to highlight for the board's review, the themes that have been made to the students' rights and responsibilities on this year. We're going to very quickly review the themes, review revisions to the SRNR to address identified themes, and then request board action on July 15. The five themes that we've identified during our annual review this year are enhancing our SRNR to increase consistency of implementation across the school division, provide supports to ensure all stakeholders understand the information provided in the SRNR, eliminate discretionary language relevant relative to information shared with law enforcement, identify changes needed to the SRNR as a result of legislation legalizing marijuana July 1 of 2021, and finally fostering a caring culture by ensuring historically marginalized groups are not unintentionally adversely impacted by our practice. As we look at these five themes, you'll notice that the actions for themes one and two are identical. Very quickly, for theme one, the actions that have been changed to the SRNR is that we've updated our stakeholder orientation section to ensure that we've identified supports for all key stakeholder groups, to ensure that students, families, staff, and administrators are addressed. We've updated definitions in the glossary of examples of those definitions or obscene material, libelous and slanderous to ensure.
Dr. Boyd?
Yes, ma'am.
I am so sorry, may I interrupt for just a quick second?
Absolutely.
I did fail to have our board members who are participating virtually check their microphones and announce their presence. I apologize, so just please bear with me. Ms. Marin?
Yes, good morning.
Mr. Frisch?
Good morning.
Ms. Cohen?
Good morning.
Thank you, as you were, Dr. Boyd.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. So we updated some definitions, and we've included in the presentations examples of those updated definitions for your review, and have also highlighted those in the red line copy. And we've also clarified that shall versus should to ensure that we have consistency in implementation of our SRNR. You'll again see that the actions taken to address the theme of providing supports to ensure all stakeholders understand, those actions overlap with the first actions, and so in order to be respectful of the board's time, I won't read those verbatim. The updates that we've taken relative to our third theme, eliminating discretionary language regarding information shared with law enforcement, are we've explicitly stated that actions that may constitute a felony, we've removed that, and so only are the actions that are required to be reported to law enforcement will be those things that are identified in our SRNR. Again, we've emphasized shall versus should to identify what must be done versus what could be done. And finally, we've updated the information to very clearly articulate safety and harm and that immediate and substantial threat which would guide administrators in their determination of what information would need to be shared with law enforcement. For theme four, identifying changes as a result of the legislation regarding marijuana, we've reviewed our council has reviewed the code, and we've updated the language throughout the document, and you'll see that marijuana is no longer referenced as an illegal drug and really more closely aligns with how alcohol is addressed in our school division, and those changes again are explicitly highlighted in the red line throughout the document. And we've also highlighted the collaboration with stakeholders, and again, we've talked with a number of groups, administrators, council, to ensure that the updates that we've included would be supported and reflective of how we would want to support students in minimizing that contact with law enforcement as we address marijuana as a result of the new legislation. Finally, our caring culture, we have really highlighted and emphasized actions around hate speech. As it relates in our SRNR, we've provided examples, and we've also identified the level of responses towards hate speech for levels one through four. We've identified language that supports families who are not in, who are immigrants, and we are continuing to collaborate to learn from our county partners about what they're doing with their trust policy. And again, that's something that the board would have to have further discussion, so that's in progress. And last but not least, we've explicitly updated directory information that families could opt out, so the persons don't, are aware that they don't have to release that information, and we've made that more explicit on today. And finally, the last item, we have really made sure that we are supporting all students' right to access restrooms and to use pronouns of their preference in our SRNR, and again, that's for all students. So very quickly, that was the five themes and the summary of high-level actions that have been taken in the SRNR this year, and again, all of that information is highlighted in the red line, and we do want to take this opportunity to thank all of the stakeholders that have contributed to the revision, so we thank you all as a school board for providing us your feedback. We thank our principals who have worked diligently, and I do want to take this moment to acknowledge them, so Ms., and some are in person and some are virtual, so I hope they are just hearing us. Cindy Conley, principal of Irving Middle School, Margaret Barnes, principal of Holmes Middle School, and Elizabeth Kobe, who is assistant principal of Bailey Uppers. We really appreciate all of your collaboration.
You're on the big screen, Laura Jane.
Thank Laura Jane Cohen as well.
Don't turn off your camera. All right, let's get back to Dr. Boyd.
So we thank all stakeholders, including Ms. Laura Jane Cohen for collaboration around the SRNR, and certainly we would be remiss not to acknowledge our counsel who has assisted us in the process, Mr. Bob Falcone and Mr. John Foster, thank you so much, and certainly Deb Scott, who has led this effort. And again, our process and our purpose of revising and updating this SRNR is to truly make sure that we have the caring culture for our community, that we're supporting our students in a way that we would want to be supported, excuse me, and our staff, and have that conducive learning environment, and we do ask for your support in approving the red line on July 15, and we welcome the opportunity to address any questions that you may have.
I just want to say real quickly, Chairman Anderson, thank you, Dr. Boyd, for your leadership. You know, you are a new leader to FCPS coming in the middle of a pandemic, and you have really taken feedback from this board about making the SRNR a truly inclusive process, not just for our students and schools, but also the process by which you gathered feedback and reflected that feedback in the document today. So we're here to answer any questions, and we look forward to board questions today, and also moving forward on Thursday, supporting this SRNR so we can share it with our principals and staff as students return to school this fall. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Definitely echo those sentiments. Thank you, Dr. Boyd, and everyone who've worked on this. As we are in this room, we will go ahead and use our nameplates. If you would like to speak, for those who are attending virtually, please just go ahead and raise your hands, and this is our time for questions, feedback, thoughts regarding this document that we've had for a while at this point. Ms. Tolan?
New procedures. I just had a quick question. I did see Plattenberg come in. I had a question about, given some of the new things around bathroom use that we've been talking about for the last several years, I want to make sure our facilities are keeping up with that, and, you know, for a whole variety of reasons, we want to provide privacy to every student. And I know it seems like eons go pre-COVID. I asked for a review in our CIP process of, you know, bathrooms across the district to really look at our high schools in particular that haven't been renovated for some time, well, middle schools, elementary schools as well, and are we providing, you know, the privacy that we need for bathrooms and locker rooms? And what are our current, you know, as we're renovating and doing things in buildings now, what are, what are our, you know, current standards that we're using to make sure that our facilities help us with, you know, what we've got in the SRNR?
Thanks, Mr. Smith. Do you want to respond to that question?
So, and we are asking Mr. Plattenberg to come back down, but I know that, I know that his team is working to implement some of the changes that the board has asked in the past, and we've had some discussions about ensuring that all of our schools identify spaces for students with regard to bathrooming, but we'll bring Mr. Plattenberg down so that he can bring some more specifics to the table.
Okay, great, thank you. The only other comment that I had is, we have a number of lists throughout the document, and so, you know, given some recent comments and, you know, what we're seeing with some of our religious groups, religion is not always in the list as a reason for, you know, that part of the definition of hate speech, or slurs, or, you know, reasons, you know, for discipline, so I wanted to just make sure that that is, you know, included in the list.
Thank you. We will review that. We have religion included in our definition or in our rights to equal opportunity section, so I think that that would cover that piece pretty globally, because that's included with sexual orientation, race, color, gender identity, national origin, marital status, and disability. So we've, that's highlighted there. Was there another particular area that you had an area of concern?
I was looking on the chart, for example, and it's RB9. It's that same list that you just went through, but it doesn't have the word religion in it. So there are just a couple of places, and then in the hate speech definition, I noticed it as well. It's that same list that you just went through, but religion is not included.
Ms. Tolan, what page of that chart?
Oh, let me see. It's.
Page 19.
Yeah, so page 19, it's RB9. Yeah. Around slurs, and it just doesn't have the word religion in the list, and I think that should be included.
And I'm going to look to legal counsel to help us out with that one. That is a state code, and so I have been cautioned that I can't change those state codes, but we can look to see what we can do about that. That one does come directly from the state RB9, but we can look at that.
Thank you.
Even if we can't make the state code change because of legal counsel, and I'll await their deference on that, we can certainly look at the definitions that we have in the back. I understand there's a whole list of different things about what hate speech, and you're saying to include religion in that. We don't want to hate any kid for any reason and make it absolutely clear in our SRNR that that's the case, including based on their own religious faith.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you, and I'm glad to follow Ms. Tolan on this, because specifically, the state code, as we have found last year, is the baseline, but it does not prevent us from adding additional areas to prevent hatred and discrimination. And so I would urge that we explicitly state that and be consistent in it, because we do know that we have had significant outpour of concern, especially on the, in the area of anti-Semitism, as well as Islamophobia and other religions, and so to be very explicit, hate has no place in Fairfax County public schools, and we want to make sure that that's very clear. The second piece that I would suggest is really important, is to also reference the state code in areas where we have expanded the SRNR, so people understand that our inclusive language is fully consistent, not only with the state code, but with the Office of Civil Rights, the Department of Education at the federal level, and White House communications on some of these concerns in the, in the document. And so we want to make sure that people understand that we are fully compliant with all rules and regulations at the state and national level. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from the school board members? I need to... Ms. Cohen?
Thanks very much. I really appreciate Dr. Boyd and team pulling out all the changes, and thank you so much to Deb Scott and Dr. Boyd for tolerating 12 people continuing to meddle in your document for months on end. We really appreciate it, and I'm really proud of the document that came out here at the end. Um, I guess a big question twofold. One, how are these changes going to be communicated to our principals? You know, I like this presentation that you've just pulled out, you know, what's new, but also I know there's some changes that give principals more of a if-this-then-this kind of rubric that we really haven't had in the past, so how are we going to communicate these changes to our principals?
Thank you so much, Ms. Cohen, and I apologize for my back being to you as I respond to you, but we are going to be doing orientation with our administrators. We collaborated with them throughout the process, and we're going to be doing multiple updates. Our first update for administrators will be highlighting the things that are new and talking through those different nuances. We know that some of the pieces are brand new, and so that we can give definitions, but examples and scenarios are certainly more beneficial because they bring that practical lens. We're also going to allow our data to drive our mid-year and subsequent reviews with administrators, looking at our data on a division-wide scale as we do those mid-year reviews, and also on a building level and regional level. If we're seeing that there are certain areas of need within one region, then that motivates us and gives us rationale to pull that small group in for more targeted PDs specifically around those pieces. We know that talking and discussing through the implementation pieces was one of the areas of high importance as we got our stakeholder feedback, and so we want to make sure that we support our many, many administrators who are implementing the SRNR to ensure consistency across schools and consistency within schools with the number of persons tasked with this responsibility.
And, and do you feel, I know last time when we made changes to better align, I think with some of the state legislation that was going on with marijuana possession and use, and I know now we're making an even more significant change as a result of some of the state legislation, are there budgetary implications? You know, last time when we went to in-school suspension model, we didn't put in place, like, an actual physical human being to be able to monitor kids when they're in that situation, so do you foresee that there might be budget implications with some of, any of these changes that we've made? Do we need to find some support positions?
Thus far, we haven't received that feedback from administrators, but as we know, as we implement, we sometime have aha moments. I think that, or, I think that one of the statements that was brought up earlier about our restrooms and identifying those pieces would probably be one of the most things that may not be a change in all places, that may be a change in making sure that we highlight those opportunities for students, that we would need to make sure that we firm up and shore up as we enter the new school year.
And Ms. Cohen?
I agree. Oh, sorry.
Just to add to Dr. Boyd's answer, as far as training for administrators, there'll be division-wide training, and then we will do follow-up training both at the region level and the pyramid level, and we'll have scenarios, and we will have ongoing work that we'll do to support our administrators, both principals and assistant principals and entire administrative teams. And before the pandemic, we were having quarterly meetings to regularly look at both academic and discipline and other data within regions, working closely with DSS and ISD, and we're definitely going to go back to that process as well in returning to school, not just five days a week, but in some of our more normal processes as well.
And is there a way, in the way that we're communicating to parents, I know that we have an electronic version of the SRNR. I will tell you, as a parent, that is something you typically don't spend a huge time delving into until you have a child that is, gets in trouble, and then you're in the glossary figuring out, you know, what the rules are, so I also want to make sure that we're doing a good job of communicating, I think, these really important changes to our families and to our students in particular, to make sure that they, you know, know what's, what's going on, and so however we can be helpful in doing that. The last thing I would say, and this piggybacks a little on what Elaine said, so it's a Mr. Plattenberg question, if he can't, if he's not there to answer, certainly I can follow up with him, but there had been conversation years ago about changing single-stall bathrooms into just bathrooms, super helpful for teachers, as elementary school especially, as we try to bring kids through the building, and we see so many of them in our schools, these single-stall bathrooms. So is that something that's an easy fix that can happen this summer, even just to identify things as single-use bathrooms?
So again.
I was just about to say, Mr. Plattenberg is not here yet. He is retrieving the responses from earlier. When he comes back, we'll fold this in into his questions.
Thank you so much, Dr. Anderson. I'm good, and again, I really appreciate this. It's outstanding work. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Frisch?
Thank you. I don't want to preempt any news that Mr. Plattenberg might be bringing, but I do know that the facilities team has been doing a couple things. One, to update the ed specs so that future construction projects are building facilities with enhanced privacy, not only with restrooms, but with locker rooms as well. And then I do know that they are working to identify, because clearly, I mean, that's only a solution for future projects, right, but they are also working to identify facilities in each school, more than one wherever possible, where, you know, these issues can be, where students can have enhanced privacy without any kind of stigmatization. So I'm hopeful that that will be wrapped up. I know that they're currently working on that, and he can speak to that. I do want to thank the willingness of Dr. Boyd and Dr. Williams and Deb Scott and our counsel to continue making this document a, you know, an example of the progress that's been made for our students. You know, the past board made tremendous strides when it comes to discipline issues, and this document reflects those huge changes that have been made over time to enhance the learning opportunities of our students and to make sure that we're not disproportionately impacting them with the way that we discipline them for even minor infractions. And this, this current document for this board is an extension of that progress, and, you know, there are students in this system whose lives will be better because they see themselves represented in this document, and they learn about the protections they have in the school system. So I appreciate the hard work of all of the staff members who worked on getting those included, and appreciate everybody's time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. Ms. Keys-Gamara?
Thank you. I do appreciate the time period we've had to collaborate and give input and that sort of thing, and so thank you for that. I really only have two things I'd like to, to mention. On page 14, it lists the right for school records, and number four states that the information may be released to others only under carefully prescribed conditions. One, I'm wondering, while we may not be able to do it in this document, how we are alerting parents regarding that, and that is also related to number seven, unless the parent has opted out of such disclosure, and I'd like to see some stronger language perhaps, where parents are aware of what that means, what those prescribed conditions are, and how they can exercise their right to opt out should they choose to do so.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamara. I think we can make those updates.
Okay.
All right, and other than that, I think I'll, I'll continue to list out, there are other sections in here that list out rights of students. I'd like to make sure we make that a little more broad, but I can have those discussions later. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other new speakers? Ms. Omeish?
Thank you, and thank you to staff for their hard work on this. I know there's been a lot of back and forth. I was curious about, you know, some of the rationale and thinking around keeping the word discrimination out of the book. I know we addressed discriminatory harassment in a particularly narrow scope. Maybe counsel can provide some perspective on this as well, but I find it a bit surprising that, that we don't very clearly name things like that, racism, et cetera. And I know that there's a choice, and I've spoken to some of you guys about an amendment I was considering to be a little bit more explicit, but I'd love to hear the thinking around that.
Thank you so much, Ms. Omeish, and this might be the best time for Mr. Falcone to bring some details around some of the things we discussed for fleshing out some of the isms, as we refer to them, ableism and some of the other things, and so, Mr. Falcone, would you come to the front at this time to, to help just discuss the definition of discrimination and why it's been maintained as it is without some additional language in response to Ms. Omeish's question?
Thank you.
Got it. Thank you, Dr. Boyd. I appreciate that. The rationale is to, well, I guess there's a couple of things. So with respect to the question about moving the definition of discrimination from, I think, the family guide at the beginning of the document to the, to the glossary per se, I don't think there was any, I don't think we had a technical objection to that, but the addition of further terms was an issue we had concerns with because there's a couple of reasons. The first one is, including some additional terms as to what constitutes discrimination is. is concerning because it's tricky to include, we can never fully encompass the panoply of all the types of discrimination. So for example, if we included anti-Islamophobia or antisemitism as specific examples of discrimination, then a person could read that and say, you know, that's a, you've intentionally left out anti-Christian discrimination or anti-Buddhist discrimination. And I know that's not the intent, but, and so even if you include language that says, you know, this list is not intended to be exhaustive and is just illustrative, you know, the way statutory interpretation usually works is that we interpret these words to have meant something. And so that was the first concern there. And then the additional concern is just with respect to non-discrimination statements. Generally, we have a number of non-discrimination statements. I think if we were to start expanding upon that in the SRNR, it could possibly create inconsistency unintentionally with other statements, non-discrimination statements that we've drafted. And so there's a concern there. And then finally, just as a sort of a technical matter, you know, adding additional terms to a glossary is not really, I mean, glossaries aren't really typically where we create a new policy. And so if we're going to include it as a policy, we want to incorporate it into the document itself or into the SRNR or into a completely separate policy. And then it would be appropriate to reference it there, but it's not typically the way we do glossaries, just as a general matter.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you addressing the additional components. But specifically with discrimination, I'm curious as to why that's not defined, given how often it's referenced.
I think it simply comes down to the glossary just didn't include it. If we want to motion that in, there is also a timing piece here. At some point, we have to stop adding to the document so that we can post the document. So it becomes kind of a, just how are we going to do business? So if we want, if we want to accept an emotion on a discrimination definition, we can certainly do that today. If I have permission to add it to the glossary, I certainly can do that. I don't know the procedure at this point. So.
If I could, one thing, Ms. Omech, if you go back to the SRNR booklet, and I guess it's page one of the regulation, the second paragraph has a sentence, "No student FCPS shall on the basis of A," I mean, it goes through all of, as many of the categories of discrimination. So I do think we have a definition in there. It's how far to take it and how much, as you try to explain a definition, are you going to have people feel something is left out in the definition? And it's a balancing act. I reflect that it is. This SRNR has evolved. If you look at this document from three or four years ago to look at it now, it's come a long way. I think it's something for us and staff to continue to reflect on. But sometimes the fix might actually layer the complexity more instead of making sure it's clear that discrimination of any kind is not allowed and it's upfront in this SRNR regulation.
Yeah, I think the intention here really is being more explicit, providing that language to lean on in those circumstances where it's not just a racial slur, it's not just hate speech, right? That's a high threshold to meet. So I mean, I would, I would hope we can consider, I know I shared over a week ago some of the language I was interested in and potentially looking at around this. So I leave that perhaps for consideration as we move forward. I also wanted to clarify in terms of the next step on religion, given that it's a protected class but not included everywhere here in being expansive. Is that going to be a next step, just to follow up on Ms. Tolan's comment?
I think the issue there was about adding religion to hate speech, and we can go back and look at that. I said I would. It's actually listed in that second paragraph on the first page of the regulation. Religion's on there. So it's about adding it in under the hate speech definition. I'm going to consult with Division Council. I don't believe it's a problem, as Ms. Corbett Sanders accurately said. We can go beyond the code, to be clear, to explain a definition, even if Virginia code doesn't explicitly include that same language. So.
Yeah, I'm just mindful that that beginning, you know, paragraph is the introduction. We're setting the tone for the document, but it's not the protections students can lean on, right? There's a difference.
Understood. Though the point Mr. Falconi made too, and I think it's important, the SRNR is a way that we typically tried to communicate to students and staff. It's important. But we have our policies and regulations to lean on, and we have a clear policy on non-discrimination in our system. So that's where we need to go. And maybe one of the things as we keep going back is, as we look at this SRNR, what are the policy and regulations that feed from that? And maybe those are some of the things that we identify with the board, that we go back and try to enhance over the year. So, because one of the things, one of the tensions is, if you make it so big, does it become something that still keeps that use that people go to understand? And I just think that's one of the tensions probably as well. But we'll certainly go back and look at the issue of the religion in that one definition, and it definitely is in the introductory language for the regulation here that we already have.
No, and I appreciate that. And I mean, I think this is, this is a broader conversation where, as a society, we don't even have necessarily the legal protections for this. So how do we, as a division, be a little bit innovative in providing a little bit more internally? I also, along these lines, is there any objection to moving up the equal opportunity right of students to the top of the list of rights? I know this is just a technicality, but to me, this is very important because we prioritize things like, you know, disciplining students for vaping is listed before, and that reflects the importance of that to our division.
What page are you on, Ms. Omech? And, Mr. Dr. Boyd, can you respond?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
And Ms. Omech, just to ensure we understand your request, you mean the equal opportunity right to the beginning of the right section?
Right. That letter K be elevated to the top.
We don't have any opposition to that, if that's the board's will.
I'm sorry. Can you clarify where that would actually go, when K would be substituted or inserted where?
B.
B?
Right.
So will be the responsibilities?
Actually, as I'm looking, Dr. Boyd, I mean, real time, just looking, the first few are responsibilities, and then the first right is letter E. So I think what I hear you saying, Ms. Omech, could we move the first right, K to E, and E can just flow down from it? We list a whole bunch of responsibilities, and then we list a bunch of rights, and you'd like K to be the first right mentioned?
Yeah, I noticed that, and then I saw there was a little bit of inconsistency, so with the order. So for example, you'll have G is a responsibility, right? But then you have F and E be rights that kind of come in the middle. So it didn't seem that there was a consistent order. If there's, if there is one, I'm happy to follow that. But however, I'd like for this to be at the top.
I got you. Align responsibilities in one order, rights in the other, and the first right being the right K.
And if, or, if we're going to leave it this way, put it at the top.
I got it. I got it. I think we can do that. Dr. Boyd, that seems to be a technical change just in the ordering. Thanks.
Thank you. The other piece I wanted to discuss was regarding the increased privacy component. I, you know, share a lot of what my colleagues were speaking to. I think it's 2021. It's about time that we consider the ways that we're going to implement that in our schools, locker rooms, restrooms, et cetera. I'd want to add that just to think through with Mr. Plattenberg when he's able to answer the question, whether that's going to come to the board, perhaps for discussion, review. I know I've been working with staff, with Deb Scott and others, for some time now, just to take a look and make sure we're inclusive in all kinds of ways, sometimes in our best intention. To be inclusive in one way, we end up being a little bit exclusive in another, just being mindful.
Ms. Omech, if you could wrap up, your time has expired, and then we could just jump to Ms. Plattenberg to answer that question.
New protocol. I was waiting for the ringer, the beep. Right. So I'd love to hear from Dr. Williams.
Is it her mic or is it all of ours that's this loud?
Is it loud? I can't really tell. I'm sorry.
Maybe just push it back a little. So let's just jump in into Jeff's question.
And I'd love to hear from Dr. Williams in response to this as well.
You had those, the question that you saw when you were gone, and then it pretty much, the second question that was asked of you dovetails into what Ms. Omech was saying regarding single-use bathrooms and the progress on that.
Correct. And thank you very much for the question. And Mr. Frisch also has been working with this as well, as Ms. Omech and many of the school board members inquiring about it. What we have done is, we've taken a while for our gender-neutral bathroom development. It's taken, first of all, that's just one piece of this conversation. It's taken approximately five years of inclusiveness, of bringing in, and Dr. Williams will be able to speak a little bit more to this, to making sure all the voices are raised in the room, make sure we're identifying places and ways to accommodate students and their needs. What we've done in the past, so we've got three basic systems. We have a legacy system where we have worked with individual principals to identify spaces for students to feel as comfortable as they could be. But we've realized that we need to evolve beyond that, and that's why we started the conversation about the gender-neutral bathrooms and the like. We do have the design plan for that to be included in the 2021 bond as a part of the functional design. I can tell you the code has changed to accommodate, for example, Foster Church High School's design will include family-changing bathrooms, but we're going a step beyond that to make sure that we have it a little more systemic throughout the facilities. As I said, we've been working with individual schools and principals to accommodate, to Ms. Tolan's questions, to accommodate students in the past. But it hasn't been something that has been as ubiquitous. It's been where the need has arisen, and therefore that creates a whole element of social, emotional components that the team has identified we need to address that differently, and we're working through that. We don't have all of those answers right now. And to Ms. Omech's comment, that process is one where we get community input, we get different group feedback, but we do not get formal board approval on individual components within the educational specification. And we haven't done that. It's certainly something that we could, we could do that would also probably protract the process, but certainly staff is willing to do whatever the body would like to entertain. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them if I can.
Perhaps Dr. Williams can address the component that I mentioned. I think that's the intention. How it's going to play out is extremely important.
Yeah, and I'll just be brief, because our team has been working with Mr. Plattenberg around this question of how do we ensure that our facilities are indeed inclusive? And I'll actually take a different track around response, and that is that we have to elevate those experiences that our students are having as they access bathrooms, as they access restrooms, right, and come to understand what those barriers are. And certainly as we create new buildings, it is much easier to forward-plan that inclusivity. But right now, we have to think about within the existing infrastructure, what are the opportunities? And so again, I think about the seals, I think about other students who are forthrightly willing to share with us, you know, what the challenges are, and then just working within those parameters with which we have access to, how do we continue to push into this work? So I think that amplifying that student voice is going to be critically important to creating that inclusive space that we all want.
Thank you very much, Dr. Williams. We are going to move on to our next speakers. Ms. Darnak Kofax?
Thank you. And this was just something that I had questions on. And, Mr. Falconi, I think you, when you were talking about discrimination, it brought forward. So in the page 61 on the glossary, we tried to define hate speech, and then we use examples. Are we following the same path of, by not having, you know, inclusive examples, and then the hate speech doesn't, the definition doesn't exactly line up with our non-discrimination policy? So I have questions on that, as I've had throughout, but I just haven't gotten an answer yet.
Not one, but two computers.
Is, sorry, hang on. So is your concern about the consistency piece with respect to discrimination and the hate speech definition?
Correct.
So I don't know that, I think that when we have hate speech, hate speech is listed as something that's in the S-bar codes. And so I think it is.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm trying not to speak too loudly, so.
I just didn't hear what you said. You said it so quickly.
Okay. So hate speech is included in the S-bar codes, and the S-bar codes are something that's developed by the Virginia Department of Education, and so we can't really mess with those too much. And so.
That's that definition right there.
Right. So that, well, that includes the term hate speech, but hate speech isn't actually defined in the S-bar codes. So I think it is helpful that we include a definition of what constitutes hate speech, and I think that that is, so I think that that's helpful. I don't think that that necessarily needs to be, I don't know that necessarily as a matter of law, that hate speech is, again, let me stress, as a matter of law, that hate speech is necessarily, would be considered discrimination for legal purposes or vice versa. It probably is, but if we're distinguishing this as two different things, then they probably have two different meanings. So, but I think that the point is well-taken, that maybe this needs to be a little tighter.
Well, that, and then the examples are limited.
Right. I think that's a good point.
So asking you, should that part stay in or be expanded? And if it's expanded, it's going to be, need to be greatly expanded, and where do we end? It goes back to Dr. Braybrand's conversation that, so.
Yeah, I think the nugget is this. The state put out a code, they put in hate speech, they don't define it. So it's up to us to try to be as clear as we can for our students and staff what it is. We got feedback today, religion's missing. Let our team go back and think about with Division Council, if there's any additional tweaks we need to make to that definition. But I do think it's helpful. We're going to have a discipline code for kids on something. We need to do our best to define that to our students and staff, what it is, so they know it when they see it. And we think we know hate speech, but what I've come to believe is we need to more clearly be able to articulate to our students and staff what that is, and we want the SRNR to help elevate kids' understanding of the kind of climate we want in our schools. So I want to make sure there's no legal issues, and I think that's the point you're bringing up. We don't want to do anything that we put in that would go against state code. But I think explaining state code in more detail is a helpful piece of feedback that we've gotten today, and that's what we're trying to do.
Which I'm fine with, but my concern all along has been, should the definition, and again, you know, I understand the need to explain that, but then the examples are not, are very limited in nature. So should they be taken out or expanded?
I got it.
I think that's a thought which we really need to, go ahead.
Dr. Boyd?
I'm sorry. I was trying to figure out the protocol we did.
That's okay.
To raise.
You just, you jump, jump on in, Dr. Boyd.
Thank you so much for the feedback. I know that in our discussion with various stakeholders, the desire was to ensure that students, as the primary stakeholders or recipients of this document, would understand what do we mean by hate speech. Perception and understanding of what that definition is might vary from students based on their experience, their age, their maturity. And we certainly understand, Ms. Darnak Kofax, Darnak Kofax's point of, if we list one, when does one become a hundred? When does a hundred become a thousand? And so perhaps there's opportunity for us to see what we, and get feedback from you as to, do we use our examples in our training, as we, in our orientation with students and with families, as here are examples of what this might be, or how much level of detail should we include in the document? And so again, we'd really want to be able to hear your feedback so we can make those adjustments. And I hear that is your concern there.
That's my concern, and I think I did speak about that as well when we had our one-on-ones. And I think, I'd like to hear from my colleagues to hear if that should either be greatly expanded or just put in training, because I think greatly expanded is, is, you know, like you said, it's a difficult one to tackle. So I would almost prefer a definition as broad as we can get it, and then examples be done in training. I'm thinking that now, but I'd like to hear from my colleagues as well what their thoughts are. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any new speakers? Ms. McLaughlin? Sorry to put you on the spot, but before I take my turn and go to go-backs, I wanted to make sure you had an opportunity.
No, I appreciate that, since I had to join you all late. I guess I would just add in where Ms. Kofax is and what it sounds like some of the conversation from staff has been. We do want to be clear about what hate speech is. When we start to then identify subgroup areas of concern, I worry that we'll just continue to hear from other members of our community saying, I don't see ourselves reflected there. So I think, yeah, I think that there's a way to do this that encapsulates at a global level of, and. level of, and Ms. Corbett Sanders found one definition through US legal, but even then, it starts to get, the longer the definition goes, the more it becomes, actually, I think, more confusing and starts to meander. So there were some things in there that just talk to what hate speech is, what it does, and just like our non-discrimination policy that talks about protected classes, and maybe this is where Ms. Darnak Kofax was going, you know, the board has set that out, what we mean when we're talking about non-discrimination and the groups in our communities, we want to make sure everyone understands those protections against non-discrimination. It would seem that way for hate speech as well, and so that would be my advocacy. Otherwise, at a global level, I want to thank Dr. Boyd. The SRNR is an unwieldy document, and as a newer member to the leadership team, you've had a baptism by fire with it, and really appreciated your outreach to all of us as board members that took up a lot of your working time to discuss it with us. And Dr. Braybrand, you know, I've always appreciated your long legacy, even before you joined us at the school system, when you were at Lynchburg, that you gave sessions at the Virginia School Board Association on how we could be more progressive and be leaders on discipline, and you've brought that here, and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. I will take my turn, and then we will have a little bit of time for some go-backs. I do want to echo something that was raised, oh, I'm so sorry, I did not see you. Go ahead, Ms. Eismoheiser.
I apologize. Just very briefly, I don't have a lot to add to the statements that have been added. I wanted to ask one question, when we go to this definition of hate speech, not the examples, but the definition, but also on page one, the discussion about discrimination. One thing that's not there is conversations about sexual harassment, and courts have ruled that sexual harassment is a form of sex discrimination, and I just, it's kind of missing from this document in terms of sexual harassment or images that are sexually harassing, things like that. So I just wanted to flag that as a thought, as to whether, on page one, we wanted to add specifically sexual harassment, as well as in here, as part of hate speech and/or discrimination.
We can definitely look into that, and we'll make sure we look back to you after we've consulted with council on how we incorporate that.
All right, then I'll just quickly jump in and talk about, I believe Ms. Cohen had shared this earlier, which is to find a way for parents to identify what is new in the document, because it is so dense. Is there a way, and I believe you've talked about this in the past, Ms. Darnak Kofax, having conversations about having kind of a preamble, kind of a what's new, just to raise, thank you. I'm glad that I was correct in that. Just some way to raise awareness, like these are the new things to look at, because perhaps you were familiar over the years with the other documents, just giving a chance to identify what is new, so that people can be an alert to that. I think, I think I agree with what Ms. Darnak Kofax had shared regarding page 61. There's some space here for us to be more comprehensive without necessarily naming every single thing, because it can be a slippery slope, because I do, I think we all want to make sure that everyone is represented. So if there's some sort of broad way to do that, so that we don't have these examples appear to be limiting. My question on, you mentioned in the themes, the things that are new, very much appreciate that piece. You mentioned that something was being updated regarding parents' rights to disclosure and documents. Is that only, page 14? Okay, thank you. Is that the only space where that is located? It is just that number seven?
With regard to the release of directory information.
Yes.
Yes, that was specific to that, that, as we know, parents have always had that right, but we didn't have that piece explicitly in there, and so we wanted to add that to make sure that they were aware of that, similar to the other section that was raised earlier about whether there was those exemptions. And I think that was also where Ms. Keis Gamar wanted to make sure that families knew, we generally say, what those exemptions are, what are those exemptions, how are they aware, and how do they access, being able to indicate that they are, that they don't provide consent.
So I want to dig in a little bit in terms of this directory information, because there are a lot of different directories that can be floating around in a school, from some more formal documents to what a classroom teacher would hand out to a class mom. What is the intent behind this directory information? What are we specifically speaking to? All of the above, real official things? Can you give a little bit more definition?
Sure. So in our information, where we indicate that parents can vote consent, if you will, or opt out of releasing directory information, that's where, for all of those pieces, and Mr. Falcone can clarify, or Mr. John Foster, that for all of those reasons that you just listed, that we would not be able to disclose that information if they opted out.
I think that might need a little, that might need a little fleshing out, so that parents understand what does it mean, because directory information that goes from the school to the central office for SOL assessments, that's not going to be something that they can opt out.
Right.
Information that goes to Pearson, that's not going to be something that they can opt out. So if we can detail what exactly can be available, so that they are aware, I can opt out of this information, I think it will be much more transparent.
Will do. Thank you. I believe those were the N of my comments that have not been addressed. So thank you for this work. All right, folks, it is 10:56, so we'll do some quick go-backs, if we can keep them to about a minute or a minute and a half, so that we can have plenty of time for the next item, which is huge. That would be much appreciative, much appreciated. We will start Ms. Corbett Sanders, and then Ms. Tolan.
Thank you. I sent around a definition of hate speech, which is a bit more inclusive and broader, and I would urge that we take a look at that as a possible way of addressing the concerns of Ms. Darnak Kofax and Dr. Anderson. Additionally, I've also, you know, want a confirmation that we are going to reference the state and federal codes on the various aspects of new language. Is that an affirmation with a hint on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then finally, we talked a little bit about the edspec, and this is something that we've talked about for years, and I would just urge that the edspec is a dark hole that nobody actually knows what's in it, and if we could have a briefing of what is in the edspec and the process for how it's implemented, I think that that is really important for this board going forward. And so although it's tangential to the SRNR, I do think that since it came up, we should have that conversation. And finally, in reference to Ms. Omeche's suggested movement of Section K, she raises a really important point. This is the student rights and responsibilities, but as we present this document, it's the student's responsibilities and then rights. And so if we truly are advocating for rights and responsibilities, I would fully support moving all of the rights up to the top of that section and the responsibilities to follow that, because I think it does show our priority on creating a inclusive, caring culture, and this is what your rights are, and based on those freedoms, you also have certain responsibilities. Would you be amenable to that?
Yes, we can do that.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Ms. Omeche, you walked out, but what we've just agreed to is that all of the rights will preclude, or come before, proceed, I'm sorry, precede the responsibility section. So thank you for your excellent idea.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Ms. Tolan?
Just very quickly, I was going to follow up on Mr. Plattenberg's extensive answer. That was really, I think, more about moving forward with construction using the edspecs. I just want to make sure, you know, and you did talk about current, you know, our current buildings in the state that they are. I just want to make sure as part of the, I know you have an ongoing review of, you know, bathrooms across the district, that we're looking at this as well in that review.
Yeah, if I may, Ms. Tolan, I'm glad you brought that up, because that was one of the things that I didn't address, even though I had it in my head. We've already requested, as we do annually with our principals, to identify basically their capacity. It's part of what feeds into the whole capital improvement program, but as a part of that process, we've asked for further clarification of identification of the spaces you just spoke of.
Thank you. I'm so sorry, folks. I did fail to recognize our student representative who joined us a little while ago, and I know he wants to jump in here. So Pranav, welcome. Please go ahead, share your comments.
Thank you, Ms. Omeche. First off, I want to say good morning, and it is such a pleasure to be here with all of you today. And, you know, with the SRNR, first and foremost, I really want to commend leadership's work in incorporating student voice into this process. This was something that we kind of lacked in years past when it came to SRNR, and it really showed, just even when you, you know, looked at the booklet, you know, it was really, it was called student rights and responsibilities, but these were your rights, these were your responsibilities. And so, you know, we're not at a full balance yet, but, you know, this is major progress in terms of really making sure that students know that, you know, hey, you have a right to feel safe, to be heard, to be called by the proper pronouns in your school environment, and that is a critical step. And the other night, I was actually watching a board meeting from a couple of years ago on YouTube, and it was also discussing the SRNR with a previous student rep, Benny Tignor, and he had even asked directly, you know, hey, how much student involvement was there, or student feedback was there in this process? And he was told there was none. Whereas, you know, this year, I know our SAC delegates were offered the opportunity to come in to give feedback, and it is really reflected in these current recommendations. I did have one question regarding the dress code, you know. I think one thing we kind of often forget, because we are such a technologically apt and modern school system, is there's so much stuff that's been there just for years and years and years, and we don't really think about why it's there. You know, even in middle school, as our school librarian fervently told us, back in her day, when she was in FCPS in the 60s, you know, girls were banned from wearing pants at school, and they had to fight for that right. So one thing I really wanted to dive into is the requirement on head coverings, and, you know, there fortunately is, you know, a reflection of religious and medical sensitivity when it comes to that. But, you know, is there still a good reason why we ban hats in general today in 2021? Would be my first part. And then one thing I want to touch up on with that is, you know, there are often things like, you know, durags, for example, which they aren't religious head coverings, but they do have cultural significance. And even though there is language on, you know, head coverings that are of cultural significance, and how that can't necessarily be punished, often admin fails to recognize that, and there's that cultural divide, where students of color are more likely to get disciplined for something as simple as wearing a hat. And kind of with that rationale, the only thing I really heard previously is that, like, students might like wear different colored hats to correspond to being in gangs, which I don't think we would see much of reflected nowadays, and, you know, I really kind of want to look into the why, you know, why this provision in particular.
Thank you, Pranav. Good timing. I just wanted to point your attention to your clock that's right there. So that was, appreciate that. That was a whole lot. So who wants to jump in? Dr. Boyd?
Well, I didn't notice that your three minutes had elapsed, because I'm behind the camera, but thank you so much for joining us, and I absolutely love your energy and passion, so thank you. We can certainly look into head coverings. I think you bring up a good piece about some things are historical, there may be different issues, you know, previously with safety and things like that, but that's certainly something that we're willing to examine. I think that it's important that, as we ask a lot of our students, that we also give them a lot in return, and so we're happy to explore that, but we certainly will want to have board input and feedback, and administrator input and feedback. So I think that maybe it's not something that we do prior to Thursday, but that's something that, you know, we would welcome the opportunity to partner with you and partner with our administrators to really have some additional discussions around, if you would be amenable to that.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. Mr. Plattenberg, were you wanting to jump in here?
No.
Oh, okay. All right. I know we have a couple of next steps, based on the feedback that you received. Oh, I'm so sorry. Ms. Keis Gamar, go ahead.
Yes, I wanted to respond to comments by several of our board members with respect to the balance of how we write our rights in here, and what's listed, and what isn't listed, and whether there needs to be additional enumeration, et cetera. And one suggestion that I hope I don't get the sad eye for is to possibly list the rights in bullet form, because I think what we have is major descriptions, but it may be easier for a parent and/or a student to look through those listed out. And so I just offer that as a consideration, because I think we've had discussions about some things and not other things, and we've mentioned religion, but not perhaps flushed it out as much. And if we could just provide perhaps bullets, I think that it would go a long way into clarity. And as we consider that, I'm seeing, I'm not getting eye contact, so I'm a little worried.
Karen, can I just ask, you're saying bullets, and then still have the explanations.
Yes, yes.
You're just saying, have it upfront, here are the bullets, and then there's later explanations, the bullets of the rights.
What we may find, what we may find is that it makes it easier, those paragraphs don't have to be as wieldy if you list it out, right?
Okay.
But the other thing that I think that perhaps overall we may want to list as a right is the right to experience discipline that provides notice in a caring culture. There's been a great deal of conversation regarding our students, how SROs interact, how staff members interact, how parents are a part of that process. Perhaps that's not a complete sentence, but I think if we can define what that looks like, or at least what our ideal is, it might help. So I will, I think we only had a short amount of time, so.
Thank you. Dr. Boyd, I believe we have some next steps that were, some feedback that were provided to you regarding the reordering, the clustering of rights and responsibilities together, with revising rights and responsibilities, and I think some definition conversations were had regarding page 15, and also some definitions in the back. I trust that you have all of that, and not a lot of time to turn this around, for us to take a look, for it to be posted, so that is recognized.
Thank you. And there's one more that I did skip, but that was not it, but I did skip that one too. It was, yes, it was sexual harassment that you were going to check in, that Ms. Eismoheiser did share. So you have all of that feedback, and I know you'll do your best to turn around to us as quickly as you possibly can for, in preparation of Thursday. So thank you. This portion of our SRNR is, the SRNR portion of our meeting is now concluded. We will turn it over to the Audit Committee Chair and Member for the Risk Assessments and Audit Plan. Please just give me a couple of minutes to move out of your way, so we might need to swap places.
Do you want to take a five-minute break, Chairman Anderson?
We'll need to take a few minutes, just so we can reorganize. Thank you. It's 11:07, so 11:15.
And I don't think I got, did she bring the piece of paper down?